Ms. Coochie? Ms. Wischnew? Mrs. Santola?
Here.
Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mr. Lewis and Ms. Begoli are now present this evening. We do have our board attorney, assistant township engineer, and our board planner. We have our call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. If you can please call the first matter?
The matter that's scheduled for this evening is preliminary and final site plan variances, a matter which was continued from November 21st, 2023, for 505 South Livingston Avenue, Block 2700, Lot 55, application number 2022-61-PFSPV, Devan Partners LLC, doing business as Northfield Dental Group.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. Go ahead. And thank you for coming back.
Thank you for having me.
Just leave it up to you. You want to proceed?
Okay. Just again, for the record, Michael LaPerry with the Law Firm of Mandelbaum Barrett. I'm counsel for the applicant, Devan Partners LLC. Thank you for having this special meeting to hear us. We are hopeful that this will be our last meeting. We're going to try to keep it as brief as possible. As Ms. Hollis had mentioned, we're seeking preliminary, final, major site plan approval with a couple of bulk variances to allow the applicant to convert the existing dilapidated building that's in the center of town into a brand-new dental office. When we were here in November, we discussed a couple of items that we needed to tweak in order to satisfy the concerns of this board. So in response to your comments, we made some adjustments to the plan. We also had some conversations with Ms. Lippman from the Business Improvement District. So a couple of the changes that our professionals will run through briefly are that we added a buzzer to the front entrance to allow for access for pedestrians or mass transit, for people entering on the street side of South Livingston Ave., which we understand is in accordance with Township Code to have an entrance. It's not the main entrance, so we would likely require a waiver for that. But we don't want to have the parking people or the people parking in the rear having to traverse the drive aisle, which we know is a little narrow, so they will have safe access for them in the rear of the building. And any mass transportation or people walking to the building will have safe access to the front of the building as well. We made some modifications to the drive aisle to widen it at the entrance, which we hope will increase the safety of the access of ingress egress, and we'll have our traffic engineer discuss that. And we completely redesigned the signage of the building, which we know was a big concern, and we agree with it. It was a little bit of a busy sign, so we took some of the recommendations of Ms. Lippman to change the style and the color. And we also are adding a monument sign to the front, which we will show meets the site triangles. And also, it's a pretty modest sign. It's consistent with the other monument signs that are in the neighborhood, across the street directly, on adjacent properties. We think, hopefully, when we show it to you, although it might require a variance or will require a variance for having a monument sign in this area, it's consistent with the neighborhood, and it's a good look, and we hope that you'll agree. So again, we think that with the changes that we've made, this is a pretty appropriate site with the hours of operation and things of that nature to handle this difficult site. So our professionals will go through very briefly some of the changes. I'll call my first witness, if you will, Mark Teichman, our project architect.
Thank you. And just so the record is clear, the board did waive the 10-day requirement for submission, so I just want the record to reflect that.
Okay, and we'll mark everything as exhibits as we go as well for that, and we appreciate that. Yes. And Mark, just while you're sitting up, you testified at the last hearing. You were sworn at that hearing, and you understand that you remain under oath? Okay. I have a couple of 11-by-17s. I don't have one for everybody because we're going to put it up on the board, but would you like me to pass some of these out as well? Okay. Sharing, I apologize. But we'll put it up on the screen as well.
Thank you.
So what we have up here, Mark, if you could just tell us what it is, and then we'll mark this as an exhibit. Mr. Valerio, I don't believe I had any exhibits in my notes.
Yeah, I believe this would be A1. I didn't have anything either.
Okay. So we'll mark this as A1. Mark, can you just tell us what we're marking as A1?
No, I'm sorry. We had A2. Make this A3.
A3, okay. I just have bad notes. I apologize.
Yeah, just, thank you.
Okay, so this is...
This is A2.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah. Got it, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at the revised front view of the building. The main difference here is that the sign on the building has been drastically reduced in size. The previous length of the sign was 92 feet. We've reduced it to 46 feet. And then you see the proposed monument sign. There were three aspects of the business that it was important to Dr. Stein to have represented in the front of the building. Headache and TMJ Center, sleep apnea, and then the general Northfield Dental Group. So we wanted to retain all those. The doctor wanted to have the headache and TMJ Center featured on the larger sign on the building. On the monument sign, the monument sign is six feet long and five feet wide, which complies with the ordinance standards. And that sign has the other two components of the business. Let me...
And so just so we're clear for exhibit purposes, this is a new front or new rendering of the building from South Livingston Avenue?
That's correct. That's correct.
It's Northfield Dental Group and then New Jersey Sleep Apnea Solutions. That's correct.
And Mark, are those just, those were the, those are the names of the entities that we initially had on the main sign?
Right.
And we're taking them off to make it a little bit of a more aesthetic...
Right, we had all three sprawled across with one larger sign on the building. From recommendations from the Architectural Review Committee, we've changed the colors of the signage and the background to make it more neutral and compatible with the colors of the building. This is the view from the rear, from the parking lot. This sign has basically stayed the same in size, but we've changed the colors again to make it more neutral. That would be A4?
Yeah, we'll mark that as A4, and that's another...
From the rear.
Yeah, another 3D rendering from the rear of the building.
Sure.
So, yeah, I communicated with the bid, and we understand that that needs some work, and I was going to mention that as well.
Just soften it up a little.
Yes. Yeah, so... Agreed. We...
Sorry.
What we, what we're told was that, and this is from Ms. Lippman, she indicated that she's not able to provide any suggestions as to what we should put there, but that if we redesign it and submit it to her, they will make some recommendations. So what we would ask for is that as a condition, we work with the bid, because we didn't have enough time to redesign the whole thing after we got the comments back, which were, you know, a couple of days ago, that she couldn't give us a recommendation, which is understandable.
I'd support that. I think that's...
Yeah, but we'll work, we'll work with her.
I think the important thing for you, from my perspective, is no one's hanging out there, right? Like, you know, the bench is nice, but it's not like a coffee shop or whatever, so I would err on the side of some softer landscaping and make it attractive rather than, you know, creating like a courtyard situation. Just my two cents.
While you're getting two cents, is this consistent with the idea of flaring out the driveway?
Yeah, so I don't think it's, I don't know if the dimensions are as accurate. We're going to have our traffic engineer and our planner, who is also our planner, discuss how we're flaring out the driveway and the dimensions of that. But that is sort of the idea. I don't know if it...
Yeah, I believe this configuration is close, but we'll...
There's also some striping that didn't make it onto this rendering. This rendering was more for the signage and the frontage of the building than it was for the, for the flaring out, but it does show how it flares out as, as part of our revision.
Mr. Teicher also said that the monument sign, six by five, would be consistent with the ordinance. There is no ordinance.
Yeah, you're right. There is no ordinance that permits monument signs.
If there were an ordinance, it would definitely be consistent.
That's correct. That's correct. That's what you would draw if you were to create an ordinance permitting it. What we are consistent with is directly across the street has a monument sign of similar size and proportions, and that's sort of what we use as a guideline.
Is that similar in size to the Sweet Basil sign?
Yes, that's directly across the street, right? I believe so. And I'm sure I could pull it up on my phone with the Google Maps, but there's one directly across the street, I believe it's Sweet Basil, and that's consistent with that. That's the one we used as sort of our guideline.
Can we get the exact dimensions of the monument?
We have the dimensions here. Do you want to give them, or does...
The monument is, it's six feet long, five feet wide, with signage on both sides. Five feet high, six feet long.
Well, that's not to scale, then.
No.
Let me...
Well, in fairness, I'll say what everyone else is thinking. The Sweet Basil sign is, in all of our opinions, a little too big, but it's also got more frontage, that whole mall, than you have, like probably five times more frontage. So I'm not sure that the same size works.
We could, I'm sure we could reduce it. I mean, it's tucked back a little bit further than Sweet Basil's, it's closer to the street than ours. We tried to keep it as far away from the street as possible so that it wouldn't be so imposing.
I mean, the purpose of a sign is for identification.
Right.
And the purpose of the monument sign is not for people walking down on the street. It's for people driving on Northfield, on South Livingston Avenue. The readability of what you're proposing, again, I don't see any dimensions, I don't see any distances, I don't see any sightlines.
Okay.
How far can you read that at 30 miles or 35 miles an hour?
So we will show you the sightlines when our traffic engineer comes up. Mark can give you the dimensions.
I mean, is there a sign person going to testify to how far you can read that sign that makes it worthwhile having? Especially the bottom part of it? I mean, just to have it, so the name's out there is lovely, but it's contrary to what we typically are trying to do. We don't want an overuse of signs. We want something that's beneficial. If the sign has a benefit, then make your case. Right now, I'm not seeing a case for that.
This is the drawing of the monument sign, like to scale, of the front elevation of the building.
So this hasn't been submitted? This is also new?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll mark that A5?
And Mark, if you could just tell us what A5 is, if there's a date on the plan or...
It's the revised sheet, Z1, so that'll be submitted with the revision date 12/13/23.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, can you tell us why you designed it, I guess, the way you did?
Well, there was obvious concern of the amount of signage on the front of the building, how much information there was, how busy the sign was. So we wanted to keep the sign on the building very simple, with just one, one aspect of the three aspects of the business, that which was most important to the doctor. So, so that's what guided it. And the doctor did not seem, when I spoke to him, concerned that these other two aspects are kind of underplayed, but did want to have some representation in the front of the building. Certainly, it's, it is small for vehicular traffic, you know, to get this information, but it was important to the doctor to have, have these two aspects also represented.
Could it be put onto the windows? I mean, we need, most of the windows have to be clear, but you can put sleep apnea perhaps on a window, or, you know, just, because I am a big proponent. I don't mind signs, I don't mind monument signs, but this, it's sad to say that I actually agree with Rich, you know? It's, you know, scaring me a little bit, but I...
I don't think that was a compliment.
I know, this is, I don't know what's happening. But I think you can put the information. I mean, I think you'll be able to see it better, and I don't know if that's okay, but I think you could put sleep apnea on a window, and it's not going to cover up most of the window, still be compliant, so...
Right, I suppose if the board doesn't, doesn't feel it's appropriate for the application, we could revise it to put it on the sign, and we could make that a condition if that's how the board wishes to proceed. But before we get there, Mark, can you tell us how big approximately the lettering is so that we can understand? Do you know how big the letters are for the monument sign? I'm sorry, yeah, for the business names on the monument sign?
I believe the, the lettering on the monument sign turned out to be about five inches tall.
Okay. So, you know, we might be able to address the readability and whatnot when our traffic engineer gets up to testify, but we do understand the concern. Again, what we were trying to accomplish, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, or you could agree with me, we were trying to make the, the front of the building a much nicer building to look at, because we were understanding and we were listening to the concerns of the board. We didn't have a monument sign the first time, we just needed to be able to identify the three business names, and that's what we're trying to accomplish. So we're trying to find a balance of how to do that, and that's really the struggle that we're having, to get all of the names up there without it making, without it being ugly.
I think we were all aiming for that, and that's why one of the suggestions made at the last hearing was that you consider having signage on the windows, which is permitted, does not require a variance, if it doesn't exceed 25% of the surface of the window. And Dr. Stein testified that it is a non-conventional dental practice, which is Northfield Dental, and that people know where to go and would have the address, as was pointed out in the course of the hearing, or would be coming with the GPS. So you probably don't need a monument sign for getting people there. You have the problem of needing a variance to have a monument sign. Now, I think you've got to look further. That's what you've heard from the board about the signage. The fact that you've simplified what's on the face of the building is highly cooperative and responsive to the concerns of the board, but you know what the rest of the concerns are.
Yeah. And I, I think that's, that's something that we could, we could achieve, and I'm certain if we agree, and I'll conform that before the end, you know, before other witnesses conclude, you know, that we could maybe work as a condition, make sure that planner reviews that, and it complies with the ordinance as to the signage. I mean, we know what it's going to look like, maybe the same ones that we took off the, off the front of the building and put on the monument sign. We would just take them and stick them on the window, same signage, but we wouldn't exceed what was permitted by the ordinance, or what was, yeah, allowed by the ordinance, or as 25%, whatever the case may be. It's funny, when we design this and we go back and forth as a team, we all say, oh, this looks great, these great revisions, and then sometimes we get up here and not always the case, so we're trying. Mark, is that all you have?
That's what I have.
Okay.
I think we're all glad that you are willing to do the buzzer and intercom at the front door. You might consider, and the board does not have to require it, but you might consider for security, including a camera, so that whoever's doing the buzzing will know whom they're buzzing in.
Dental offices these days seem to be filled with cameras all over the place. I'm sure there will be...
So our, our next witness is Matthew Sekler. He is a traffic engineer with Stonefield Engineering. He is also a professional planner. He testified at the last hearing. He was sworn in. I believe his credentials were accepted as a professional planner as well, even though he didn't testify such yet, and he does remain under oath, is that correct?
That's correct.
Matt, if you could, you made some plan revisions. I know you're pulling them up now. If you could please just identify what they are so that we could properly mark them as an exhibit, and then walk us through some of the changes, which I believe are only to the ingress egress area of the plan.
Certainly. What we prepared was a single sheet called Site Plan, prepared by Stonefield Engineering Design. Address, the date was 12/18/2023, sheet 1 of 1, and I'll zoom in so everyone could see the specific changes. First, one of the items that we...
Yep. This will be A6, yes, I apologize.
So I'll kind of refer over my own head here, some of the changes that we made, maybe with the mouse, this will work better. Previously, as was testified to, we have obviously the narrow driveway that reaches Livingston Avenue. What we are looking at doing is modifying that driveway so it widens out once we get beyond the building to 18 feet in width between the existing curb that separates us from the bank property, and again, and kind of our front lot. You kind of saw the hints of that in the previous rendering, but essentially what we've done is we've widened that out to 18 feet until we get to the area of the sidewalk, and then we would apron that out another four feet to 22 feet wide when you reach the street. This is somewhat similar to the restaurant to our west, where that also has basically about a 20-foot opening when you get to the street. And again, we're at 22 feet, but 18 feet, so we could fit two cars side by side if need be. We're also proposing putting in a double yellow line down the center, so when you're either entering or exiting, you do identify the fact that you should basically be staying to the right, at least in that immediate area of the driveway, and then until you reach the rear. At the rear of the site, we did add a sign. We've located it here, next to the building frontage. If you're leaving the back parking lot, it is a sign that will say, stop for oncoming traffic, so if you happen to be looking to leave the driveway and you see someone coming in, you know to stop in the rear in that area. Again, it shouldn't be a surprise that it's a one-way driveway if you're, or one-width driveway if you're in the back of the site, since you must have traveled through there to get to the rear, but it's just another reminder of someone before they leave that they should be looking to see if anyone is coming towards them before they look to exit. But again, once you get past the end of the building, we've widened out to 18 feet in width, enough room for two cars basically side by side, so if someone's looking to leave the site, there's enough room for them to wait while someone can at least get off the roadway and into the site itself. I think there was some discussion about sightlines. What we, we've done, I guess, various versions of sightlines. What we've shown here and dashed is the sightline if you're at the driveway to make sure that that, that monument sign is not impeding near view, but obviously with the monument sign no longer being in factor here, that line would not be relative, important to this application, but we did add that to the plan for A6. Yeah. So that's the summary of the traffic engineering changes, the access. I obviously have not given my planning testimony yet. I guess I would defer to counsel or the board if you want me to just give all my direct testimony, or if you want to stop and discuss these changes.
Why don't we see if there are any, any change, questions for this?
I have a couple. There was some discussion about a mirror. Is that something that you're still thinking about?
We could, we could install a mirror. I don't think there's any issue with installing a mirror for this. Again, I don't know, its effectiveness will probably be better in the rear, but obviously you're not going to be able to see from the mirror all the way to the other end, but you'll at least be able to tell before you kind of come out from the side of the building that there may be someone immediately approaching, so we can add that mirror.
And have you given any consideration to measures that may be necessary at the flare to protect the landscape area and the entrance to the building?
Yeah, I would imagine in this flare area, we want to do some form of kind of curbing. I would probably suggest that, obviously with the landscape design, if there is some softer landscape, planter boxes, things like that, that could be utilized as a nice kind of separation between the, between the driveway itself and the entrance to the, the building.
Along that line, I, actually, it's a, one, thank you for what you did with the widening of the driveway out there. I think that that's an important, very important element with regard to the safety of somebody coming in. The other area, which Mr. Client was talking about, and I think you talked about as well, is that potentially you have people walking here, potentially you have people going in the front door, and potentially you have drivers that are turning off of a busy street into here and then see somebody and bear to the right. I think there's the real possibility of accomplishing two things. One, the landscaping to soften the front of the building, and two, protecting all of the people, the pedestrians to the left of that or the north of that by using some sort of planter box that, now that you don't have a monument sign, you don't have to worry about a planter box or planters hiding that. You get to soften the building, you get to protect pedestrians on the other side, you get to soften it with some landscaping, and I think that's a home run. Would love to see that considered.
Yeah, I, I think I could speak for the applicant that we will, now that we have the appropriate room for it without the removal of the sign, we can absolutely install some, some planter boxes in front of, in front of the...
Going back to the rear parking, is the ADA space van accessible?
Yes.
And tell us a bit about how you have ADA access to the building.
So again, that may be, I don't know, for the architect or the site engineer who's not here, but I believe that there will be accessibility from the rear as well as obviously from the front. The front is also a, a direct entry point in which someone could buzz in from the front of the site, but again, I, I believe, while this may be showing stairs, I don't believe there are stairs in the rear of the site.
That's the problem. It didn't look as if there were stairs.
Yeah. We, we took the site engineer's plan to make these changes on here. I don't believe that there are stairs that they've been removed as part of this. Look at the architect for help, but...
That drawing seems to show a landing and a ramp.
Right.
I'm, I'm looking at the A4 rendering. It doesn't seem, it doesn't show any stairs in the, in the rear.
Yeah, I, I... Mark, I didn't think we had any stairs in that. We confirm that? Okay, so we, we don't have our, um, our site engineer here with us. But maybe we could take a look at it. We've got enough smart people on this, who know how to read plans, I hope. The ramp.
Yep.
Oh, God.
Yeah, so looking at the plan, the rendering. Yeah, there is basically an entry point here and then a ramp up to the door. So you do have an ADA accessible area from the ADA space. You'd enter in this area, up the ramp and into the store, into the building. There is also the steps.
Testimony on sign illumination.
Okay. We'll let the architect jump up for that.
As far as illumination, we were considering doing channel letters, so it would be rear illuminated. But we're not really sure, you know, like with the custom logo, whether we'd be able to achieve that. So we might have to do, uh, face illuminated, but it, it wouldn't be, you know, rear illuminated sign. It would either, it would be indirect in either case, the illumination.
Like goose neck lighting from.
Yeah, that's correct.
I mean, I guess, at what point are you going to make the decision if we're going to be talking about it and/or approving something? Knowing what we're approving is beneficial.
Goose neck lighting would be, uh, what we'll do.
It runs along the side of the building anyway that we have the goose neck lighting, right? Side illumination, or not really the goose neck, similar, similar lighting on the side of the building. Carry that forward.
That's right.
Similar?
It's generally illuminated from above.
That's correct. That's correct. And that would only be in the front. We wouldn't do it in the rear.
And what would you do in the rear?
I don't believe we're intending on illuminating the sign in the rear, so.
There's lights on both sides.
Right.
Nobody's going to see a sign from the back.
There's no, there's no evening hours proposed.
Yeah, you're going to know where you are and, you know, even in the winter when it starts crawling, you don't know where to walk in.
As long as, as long as the entrance is obvious where they're going to, then there's no issue.
Right.
No open questions, Peter?
I have a quick question. Back to the, the front of the driveway, when you come in, I'm just, I know it's 18 feet now, but when somebody's turning in and then someone's coming out, where is the turn-in person supposed to go? I mean, I, I just.
Yeah, so if someone's waiting to leave the site, let's say someone's waiting for the gap in traffic, they're waiting in what would be either this nine-foot section or it actually widens out to beyond 12 feet as you get closer to, to the street. When you're coming in, you actually also have wider than nine feet to come in. If you look right here, you could see that there's like an angled curb.
Yeah.
So basically you have over 12 feet in terms of space coming in and then coming out, you also have over 12 feet as you're leaving the driveway as well. So that is enough room for basically two vehicles to be in the space at the same time. This double yellow line here is what we're the, um, this double line here in black would be the double yellow line separating the ingress and the egress.
We, we don't have a color rendering of it, of the lines.
Basically, this is what's separating in and out. Your in would go from here to here with, again, that little flare. Your out would go from here to here with this flare.
Right, and just to be clear, Matt, it's, so the, the variance we're seeking is the, the minimum driveway width that's required is 22 feet. And we're at 10.1, but where's, what is it at its max where it flares?
So if you were to measure where this flare out is to this flare out, it's in excess of that minimum.
Okay.
It's probably at least 26 feet from the furthest point on either edge of the driveway.
So we, we, we comply for a couple feet, at least, yeah.
We're, we're right at the driveway and we, we comply, then we go to 18 and then down to, again, what functionally is greater than 10.1, but is 10.1 to that property line?
The engineering department had recommended, uh, consideration of some kind of fall protection at the, the wall in the rear. Have you addressed that?
I believe, I think we, uh, we, um, we said that we would, we would put some fall protection in, in the back wall. I believe we agreed to that.
I don't think it's actually on the plan, but it's.
I think it was after the last hearing, so we didn't, it's not on the.
It's not on the plans we've received.
But we, we will, obviously if that's a condition of approval, we will make sure it's a safe site. I think we had some fencing proposed back there, but, um, we'll make sure it complies with the engineer's comments.
Did we finalize, um, what we're doing with regard to refuse and recycling?
It's going to be, we, we confirmed that we don't have enough, or we don't anticipate enough based on Dr. Stein's, um, operation of his other practice. That'll be pulled out. We don't need, they don't have enough, uh, that would require a dumpster for this office use. It's all paper. So we would just have a private hauler if that's how it's necessary, and we would have that picked up. But we would pull the, pull the can out. It's really going to be minimal, you know, minimal trash. Some, some.
Just to be clear, not having that requires a variance.
Yeah. I wasn't sure if it was a design waiver or a variance, but we would be seeking either one of those, whichever is required, a design waiver or the variance for that. And we don't have a loading zone, uh, as well, but we don't have any large deliveries either. I think that was a testimony. Our engineer discussed that briefly last time, but we confirm that. We're not going to make any changes. We're just going to request a variance of waiver for this operation. Yeah, I, uh, our, oh, there he is. Mark, I don't know if, if we identified the exact location of them, but again, it's really like, it's, it's just wastepaper baskets in the offices. For the most part, they have medical waste and medical waste gets picked up specially.
So you're just going to put it somewhere in the building that drives out?
Well, this janitor's closet.
Yes. And again, that was based, I think, I don't know if Mr. Stein testified last time that that's how he does it at his other office and it's sufficient. He doesn't need anything more than that. A dumpster would be overkill and would take up a parking space.
This, this janitor's closet towards the rear of the building is the likely place.
Do we have these plans already?
Which sheet is that?
Is this the new one that you referred to earlier?
That's, yeah, that's the revised Z1 sheet.
So I think the interior is the same as what you have, but this is.
The floor plan hasn't changed.
Right, but he's pointing to A5.
Could we go back to the double yellow line at the front? I need some, I need some dimensions. What is the length of the double yellow line?
It'll be the same as our setbacks. Hold on. Let me measure off the actual, actual plane.
Okay. Just saying from the top of the building to.
So we have about 17 feet from, from the building to the property line. So basically we have 17 feet and then we obviously have some beyond that goes beyond the property line to the street. So again, 17 feet, it's about the size of parking space. I mean, you basically have a nine-by-17 area, it's again about the size of parking space, coming out, coming in, and then again it flares and goes longer as you get to the driveway.
And at the point where it's parallel to the building, you shell 10.1 feet for the left side.
So it's 10.1 feet to the property line.
What is the right side width?
This area here is another, I believe, three feet. So you have about 13 feet till you get to the actual curb that's out there.
But the vehicles coming in would have greater than three feet to enter or they wouldn't?
Correct. Once you reach this point, it becomes basically, it has to be one way. You don't have enough width to have two cars pass side by side.
And again, one more time, they're coming out on which side?
They're coming out.
That's what I thought.
Here.
Yeah.
Right.
That makes sense.
They're coming in here.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify.
Again, if you want, we probably could maybe dash the last little bit of this double yellow so people kind of get the idea that it's going to be narrowing on them. You know, that's something we could do here. So the last couple is kind of like a, a dotted version of it.
So we did propose again that stall that basically says, stop here for incoming traffic.
What you could do is you could have it basically being lit up on a motion sensor so that if a vehicle does trigger the sensor.
How does that person know there's incoming traffic?
Right.
That's my question.
So what you could do with this is you basically trigger it to a, like a loop system. So basically as a car drives over it at the front of the site, basically that would trigger. The only thing is that motion sensor, uh, we could make it so it's smart enough that it knows the car's coming in when it's dripping versus when it's leaving.
You could, will you?
Yes, you can, yes.
Quick question. How many people are going to be working at the same time there?
I believe it was testified as eight totals, the maximum.
Was it eight?
Eight was the maximum shift.
I don't think there's any need for that light. It's not going to do you any good until a car is well into the driveway. So that I would think what you've now proposed all along of the sign and the mirror should be sufficient.
And I, I defer to the board, whatever. Okay, so I, thank you.
Let me see, any, any questions from the public for this witness as to his testimony? Seeing none, okay, thank you.
So again, we'll, we'll try to wrap it up very briefly. Mr. Sekler is also going to provide some quick planning testimony as to the variances that we're seeking. I think it would be beneficial if I just mentioned them briefly, what they are, uh, so that we're all on the same page because I know there's been a little bit of, uh, some changes. So what I have is we are no longer seeking maximum number of the permitted signs because we have reduced it. We eliminated the monument sign and the glass signs, uh, decals are permitted. We're no longer seeking the monument sign, which we weren't seeking last time until we got here anyway. We were previously seeking a height variance. We reduced the building. There's no more height variance that we're seeking. We are seeking a minimum driveway width of 22 feet where it is 10.1 feet at its narrowest, uh, which is in existing condist, uh, existing condition, uh, but we're maintaining that existing condition. We have 17 parking spaces where 16.5 are required. There was some discussion at the last hearing that if the second story, which we are going to be used as only storage, is uninhabitable space, um, if that were to be counted, it would trigger another six parking space requirement for our, um, for that storage space, which doesn't add anybody to them. We didn't believe that it was required, but if the board doesn't agree with that interpretation, then we would ask for a six-space parking variance just for the storage area. Again, I don't believe that it's necessary, but it was called out and noted, and I think the testimony was it will not be used for anything other than putting boxes up on the, on the half store. It's not large enough of a space to be actually used for anything other than storage, but I wanted to point that out. Again, I, I have them as design waivers. It could also be variances, but we have, there was an issue with the minimal landscaping in the rear of the site because it's all paved. There's no dumpster on site and no loading zone on site. And finally, the waiver for a primary entrance facing the street where we won't have it as our primary entrance, it will be a secondary and easily accessible entrance, but technically if there's only one prime entrance, ours would be in the rear. Those are what I have. I, I don't know if the board has noted any other potential variances required at this point in time, but if not, we'll have our planner run through the testimony on those. Matt?
Yep. So again, um, from a zoning perspective, it's important to note that this is in the B Central Business District in the municipality. What we are removing here, besides being somewhat of an eyesore of a building, getting a huge upgrade from a visual standpoint, is removing a non-permitted use from the business district. In terms of permitted uses and non-permitted uses, non-permitted uses include public garages, gasoline filling stations. This was a public garage that meets the definition of what a public garage was, which was a repair facility for a number of years on this property. Or placing on this site is not just a permitted use, but we feel like a permitted use that is well-suited for this property. Other permitted uses, other than this kind of medical office use, would be retail stores, shops, drinking establishments, eating establishments, all these uses that if they're successful, may generate levels of traffic, levels of staff that could be beyond the control of the individual developer of this property. Again, if you get a, a, a great food establishment here, you know, a great restaurant, you can't control how often people will be coming up and down this driveway at whatever time they're coming through. But this type of use, which was testified to in terms of, you know, the, the type of specialized work that they do, the way that they schedule their appointments, the amount of staff they have on, on hand at one time, this is not something that during flu season they're going to be overrun with appointments because of the way that this type of medical office, this type of dental practice, um, operates. So again, I think when you look at permitted uses, this is the type of permitted use you want in a building like this because by all means, this is not a property that is perfect in its design, but we're dealing with the aspect that this has been developed for a number of years. We're looking to keep the building itself and we have this very narrow drive aisle. And again, trying to find the right use that fits your ordinance, uh, can be a challenge, but we think we found it with this type of application here and, and really have made some significant improvements to the property. We do not, we don't believe we're seeking a parking variance anymore. We're not seeking FAR variance. We're not seeking a coverage variance. All of these things are things that could be seen as an over-intensification, even if you are a permitted use. We are not pushing the envelope with this development. We are looking to fit into this existing building and basically help clean up and keep, uh, the B Central District, this kind of little downtown area, um, you know, uh, give it another upgraded, uh, uh, building here and upgraded development. When you look at your master plan, there are actually a couple of specific, um, goals that I found that are really reflective with this application. One of which, um, I think definitely speaks to this is the goal that relates to encouraging improvements of appearance of the business district, which I think we are here clearly. The old garage is an eyesore compared to what you're seeing on this, uh, application here. Also, another goal and objective was to, um, balance desirable economic development or revitalization to reinvest, reinvest in existing commercial areas. Again, this is clearly a reinvestment in a commercial area, going from non-permitted to permitted use and upgrading the site. And then one that while, uh, and then one that while I may be stretching the goal a little bit, it talks about kind of restoration of historic buildings. By no means do I think this is a historic building, but I do think something is, is good from a planning perspective when you could adaptively reuse a, a development. One, it saves an immense amount of. One, it saves an immense amount of kind of waste. Again, when you basically take down a building, have to rebuild from scratch, there's a large amount of waste that's involved. Being able to reutilize an existing building, you know, kind of maintain the setbacks that have been here for years and years and decades, I think is an improvement, and be able to do that adaptive reuse from a non-permitted use to permitted use, I think is definitely successful and does meet the, um, objectives of your master plan. In terms of the variances that we're seeking, they're obviously, I would say, somewhat split between kind of C1 and C2 standards. All of the pre-existing non-conformities that relate to the drive aisles and the kind of, the, the building itself, those are C1. The property is narrow, and it's, you know, been this way for, for decades now. It is something that unfortunately, because of the unique situation out here, we are stuck with. And those, I believe, are C1 variances, because we are stuck with this hardship of the way this lot has developed over the years. Um, there are some also C2 variances here, or waivers, as was previously referenced, regarding the lack of dumpster, lack of loading, uh, zone, but again, I think that that fits this property better. This is a better plan, one, not needing to waste space on the, in the back of the site for dumpster, not needing to sacrifice parking for a loading area that will never be used. This, you heard the type of operations here. This is a, a dental practice that does not get large truck deliveries. I don't think a large truck could even necessarily get to the rear of the site to make certain deliveries. So again, I believe that, um, looking at the site, we definitely, uh, I think meet the standards of a C2 variance, which would be reflecting a, um, you know, a, a better alternative, planning alternative. I think we meet the purposes of zoning overall, from, uh, the MLUL, looking at specifically the, um, promotion of, uh, enhanced visual environment. Again, I can't speak to it enough, the improvement that you see on this property here, from the streetscape point of view, again, we've agreed to make some, add some planters, um, uh, again, the building's been dressed up, uh, definitely will be a, uh, a, a great improvement over the, what's been out there over the years. So again, I do think we meet the purposes of zoning. I don't believe there's any substantial negative impact with this development in any way. Again, this is a low-traffic use. This is a low-intensity use in an area that there are a lot of intense uses around us. We understand the limitations with the property and the way this building has been designed over the years, but I think we found a plan and a use that best fits your master plan, zone plan, uh, and operational plan for this, this property.
Further, uh, direct testimony?
I have one more question about the signet.
Yes.
The number on the side of the building, there's some people who are in favor of it, some people who are not. It does require a variance if there is to be a sign on the side of the building. The building at present has the number on the front of the building. That number could be on the face of the canopy, without any variance required.
Yeah, we, we could, I'm sure we could relocate that.
Well, we could give you a variance.
Or we could give you the variance if, if you prove its need.
Right. Right. Well, I, I think it's a, visually, it's a desirable, uh, you know, to have it in that existing location. I know the existing building right here, as I'm looking at it, has the words "The Trans Shop" written on the side of their building with the, with the number on the front. Um, I, I suppose we could probably...
Yeah, Mr. Santola pointed out that it would be a benefit to people coming from the south.
Yes.
But it doesn't do anything for people coming from the north.
Right.
It's, it's better from one direction than having, if you have it in front of the building, usually it's not as visually seen, so kind of both peo- both directions don't have it great. You have it on this side of the building, at least one direction, you have it seen well.
So you might want both.
I think...
The postal service and the fire department would want a number on the front of the building.
Right.
So you might want to have a variance for the sign on the side.
I, I, I think if, if the board, um, would welcome it, we would then request it to have on both sides. We'll find a spot prominently on the front to make it accessible to both.
On the side of the building it is.
Yeah, traffic as well as the emergency vehicles. If we could add, we'll add a 505 on the front. And it will work. If, if you want us to work with your professionals for the appropriate location, we can certainly do that, but we're obviously, our goal is to make it, um, you know, look as nice as possible, so we don't take away from the, otherwise take away from the front of the building. And Matt, just so we are clear, that variance, for the reasons you've already stated, the other variances...
I also, yeah, I think this is a benefit from, to the free flow of traffic. Again, having the visibility in that one direction, I think, is important, especially because of the close proximity of our driveway and the bank driveway next to it. We want people to be able to identify that this is a access point for 505, and then again, having the sign above the front door, again, I don't think is a, uh, having a number is not a variance on the front, but again, I do think does serve the other flow of traffic.
Any other questions? No, we're good. Um, so are there any members of the public wishing to make a sworn statement for or against the application? Seeing none?
Thank you very much. I don't need to rehash what Matt had already stated, you know, summarizing the entire project. Um, you know, one of the things I, I enjoy about appearing in front of this board is that we, you know, we're able to get a lot of the feedback that's important and actually helps the project, rather than just making suggestions for the sake of it. The, can't be a better example than, than what we just discussed here, is, you know, although we're gonna have signage on both the front and the number on the side and the front, it makes a lot of sense. And at the end of the day, I think, based upon all of the feedback that you have provided to us, the willingness of the applicant to, to go ahead and make all of these significant changes, what I think are pretty significant changes, in order to accommodate all of these suggestions, um, I think it's a, it's a really great working, uh, you know, relationship with the applicant and this board, and we really appreciate it. Um, the only thing I will just say in sum is, we think this is, at the end of the day, this is gonna be a quality project. It certainly is an improvement from what we see. This is right in the center of town. This, this building that's been sitting there, um, you know, it's, it's a tough site, it's a difficult site, and I think it's a great thing for, for Livingston to have the applicant come in here and, and clean this up. And also, I think we've made it a little bit of a safer, uh, for, for the pedestrian, um, for, sorry, for the vehicular access to and from the site. So I think overall, thanks to this board's, um, you know, suggestions and recommendations, I think what we have here is finally, uh, a really good, a really good plan for this site, and we, we thank you for your time and your consideration.
Uh, thank you. And also, I, I have as just conditions, um, bid to approve the streetscape, um, signage on the windows, I guess, who's going to, we, we don't have any...
We can work with your planner, I mean, or your planner or the business improvement district, whomever is, you know, your planner will probably be able to sign off on that we comply with the ordinance, uh, and the business improvement district will probably let us know if, uh, it's acceptable visually.
And then, um, I get floor protection on the top of the retaining wall, which is actually part of the engineering letter, which it said you would be complying with.
Right.
And then, um, front address sign on the, an address sign on the front of the building. And then the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I have eight, if I count correctly, uh, eight variances.
We also, uh, agreed to Mr. Klein's suggestion that we would install the mirror in the, in the rear.
I agree that this application affords us an opportunity to rehabilitate a property that's been an eyesore for years, and I think the board appreciates the applicant's positive response to our concerns. The pre-existing location of the building and its parking area makes it logical that the primary entrance be at the back, as it does now, offer no other opportunity for that kind of entry. And my, in my opinion, the exhibits and the testimony that's been given demonstrates that what has been proposed in regard to entrance would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, particularly in light of the other changes that have been agreed to, uh, and therefore, I would grant a waiver of the code provision that the principal building entrance be at the street front. And, uh, since there will be a pedestrian access door at the front with the intercom and the buzzer and a camera, that would provide for those not arriving in their motor vehicles and give them the pedestrian access from the street that's required from the code. So I think you fully satisfy the requirements of those provisions. Concerns about the two-way traffic in the driveway have been sufficiently mitigated by the proposed flaring of the driveway in the front yard and by installation of cautionary signage and of a mirror that would allow exiting drivers to exit the parking areas seeing incoming vehicles already in the driveway. The flaring and with the double line would make it much safer. I think that it should be a condition that the design of the double line and its location have the approval of the engineering department. Now, we are, we know that the driveway width does not meet the code requirement of twenty feet for two-way traffic. It's an existing condition. You are effecting a change from the prior use to a new use, and so I would suggest taking the precaution of granting a variance from the twenty-foot width requirement, so as to allow that condition to continue. I think it's just a precautionary measure, and the board doesn't have to do that if they don't choose to. I think we've had this agreement now as to how the signage is being changed, with the window signage with a twenty-five percent cap. So all that remains on the proposed signage is whether or not you get a variance for having the number on the side wall, and that's up to the board to decide. I would grant a variance from the Section 94 requirement that there be a trash area, and from the requirement that there be a loading space. The four parking spaces that are intended for employees, you've agreed will be signed for that purpose, but our code requires that every parking space have access and egress via an open and unobstructed aisle. I would then propose a variance from that requirement, limited to those particular I think there are a couple of other variances that were discussed in the course of the hearing. The, uh, the report on the environmental inspection would be provided to the town before any permits are issued.
Conditions.
Yes, that was our, I'm sorry, conditions. Thank you very much. I'm very glad to have you sitting next to me. There was the agreement that, uh, the attic would only be for storage consistent with The front wolf sign would be illuminated from above.
Exterior.
Exterior and above. Thank you. That was your language.
Who's next?
And who's next were mentioned, but we're not limited to that. I think also, we would want the proposed planters for protective purposes to be approved by the engineering department.
Mm-hmm.
And our model conditions of approval, except for Title 30 enforcement and a developer's agreement. With that, I would propose a motion to approve, subject to memorializing resolution, upon the board's determination of whether or not they're granting the variance for the number on the side of the building.
I would just add the condition of variance, that while there's no trash area needed, we're gonna pick the trash up in the back of the building.
Yeah, we don't want any trash on the street, right?
We don't want the cart, you know, 'cause then somebody has to stop to unload it there, and that's not a good spot on Livingston Avenue for that either.
I would second Mr. Klein's motion, and I would agree that the variance for the sign on the side of the building, in addition to the variances outlined by...
Yeah, I think it makes sense to have the sign on the side. It's, you know, if you're going, if you're going north, you know, we'll identify, you know, it makes it easier to identify the property, especially since there is no monument sign that's there.
Right, and Livingston Avenue gets a little hanky there, where two lanes come into one, and you have the shop right there.
Yeah, shop right there, and, yeah, that makes sense. So is a motion and a second?
Hey, I'd like to just also say, I think it's a great location for it. We have a dental office down the, you know, just one block over, and what's so perfect about this location is right next door is a bank. And when you go to the dentist, usually you're a little bit lighter in the pocket also, so I think going to the bank is, having it right there is a great location, uh, so it, it fits all, it fits the whole community, you know?
I think that's...
So I would, I would support it.
Thank you, Dr. Reber. Imagine what you'd need next to the orthopedics office?
No ATM in your office.
So we, we, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Diner?
Yes.
Mr. Retner?
Yes.
Mr. Reber?
Yes.
Ms. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Vishnu?
Yes.
Mr. Santola?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to have an applicant who works with us to get us to the result that we're all trying to reach.
So, so with that, this is Peter's last meeting.
Hallelujah.
Um, we, we appreciate...
Aren't you lucky?
He's going out, we're going, we're going out on a high note with, with, uh, Mr. Klein, so that's, this is great.
Peter, we, we appreciate always all of your help, all of your thought, your, your thoughtfulness and everything that you bring to this board, so, um...
Beware what can happen.
We appreciate it.
You will be very much missed.
We, you will be very much missed, and, uh, would you like to make the motion to adjourn? And say, not, not Mr. Diner?
No, I, we're not deprived, Mr. Diner, of that privilege, but thank you for offering the opportunity.
I, I thank you, and I just want to also offer my condolences to the board and, um, congratulations to Mr. Klein, and, and enjoy all of the free time when you're sitting home and going, "What am I gonna do Tuesday night or Thursday night? I'm dying, I'm bored."
He's gonna be, there's gonna be a chair back there, he's gonna be sitting every Tuesday.
And condolences to Mrs. Klein, who's gonna have to now deal with him with nothing to do. Um, and, and again, thanks to the applicant. This is really a, ultimately, I think, a terrific improvement to, to what's there and will be an asset, and thank you. I make a motion to adjourn.
With that, we're done.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.